Of course, Mayor. Councilmember Snyder?
Present.
Councilmember Holliver?
Present.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Here.
Mayor Leva?
Here.
Thank you. All members of the City Council is present.
Perfect. Shall we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. So, we have actually no ceremonial presentations tonight. And so I'm going to move right to the agenda overview. And City Manager Williams?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council and Millbrae Community. Tom Williams, City Manager. So on the agenda this evening, we have our standard items, our calendar of events, reports and bills and claims, which are our standard items under item two. We, under item three, we have approval of minutes, and there are no meeting minutes to approve this evening. Item number four, we have no reports from our committee or commission chairs. Then we move into public communication. This is the part on the agenda that any member of the public can address the City Council on any item not on the agenda, and comments are limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have five items on the consent calendar of this evening, starting with item number five, which is the adoption of our resolution finding the proclaimed state of emergency in the state of California to the City of Millbrae continues. This allows us to continue to meet via remotely. Item number six is city commission and committee recruitment and appointments. Item number seven is to consider adoption of a resolution approving the extension. And sixth amendment with the agreement with the Millbrae Community Television, known as MCTV, and in the amount of 21,000 for broadcasting to finish out the fiscal year 2122. And then moving into a two-year agreement for 2122 and 2223 for a total contract amount of $222,900. Item number eight is to approve the quarterly investment schedule for the quarter through the fiscal year 20212022, and that's the third quarter of that fiscal year. Item number nine is to consider a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute an agreement with the San Mateo Office of Emergency Services. That's our district coordinator position. I have been requested, Mayor, from two members of the City Council to actually remove this item from the agenda and refer this to the Fire Safety Subcommittee for further review and bring this back to the City Council. Even though this contract is with the Sheriff's Office, I did get the request to vet it through that. Then we move to public hearing. There are no public hearing items. Existing business, we have no items under existing business. And the new business, we have four items, starting with item number 10. That is to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending the municipal code, Chapter 3.301. That's our uniform transit occupancy tax, our room tax for hotels, increasing the TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax Rate from 12% to 14%. Item number 11 is an informational update status report on the preparation of an ordinance to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products. Item 12 is the designation of a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the upcoming 2022 League of California Cities Annual Conference at Expo in September. And item number 13 is a resolution authorizing City Manager designated to execute an agreement with the firm Nielsen Mercimer for state legislative advocacy and lobbying services on behalf of the city. Then we move into council comments and adjournment. A real quick, Mayor, quick updates. We have our 2022 Election Information Workshop. The city has hosted two previous in-person workshops. And tomorrow night, July 13th, from 6:00 to 7:30, we have a virtual meeting to anybody that's interested in learning about district elections and the process is free to join. It can be accessed on our website and also specifically the link bit.ly backslash Millbrae Workshop. So again, bit bit.ly backslash Millbrae Workshop. There's no registration needed, and so people can just join in. You can also contact Elaine Tran, our City Clerk, at 650-259-2414. Again, 650-259-2414. Also, the Millbrae 2040 General Plan. That is our long-range planning document that guides decision-making and establishes rules and standards for new development, city improvements, and land use throughout the city. And it reflects the community's vision for the future of the city of Millbrae. We also, a component of that is the Downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. And that is currently available for public review. We have a dedicated website, millbrae2040.com, that the public can access the draft document and make comments, public comments. And everybody's feedback is welcome. Again, that website is millbrae2040.com. Also, Millbrae goes to the movies, scheduled for August 12th. The movie is Pirella, and that is, again, Friday, August 12th. And festivities start at 6:00 PM, food trucks, games for kids. And the movie starts at 8:15 or when dark. So that is Friday, August 12th. We also have our Beach Brews and Vines, our downtown concert series. That's a third Thursday of August. That's August 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Come out and support local businesses and enjoy the concert downtown. And then, lastly, our fall sports programs in our schools will be starting up this fall. And we are looking for coaches for girls volleyball, flag football, and cross-country. So anybody interested in becoming a coach for elementary and middle school sports programs, please reach out to our recreation department. And information of this is available online, again, at bit.ly backslash Millbrae Coach. So bit.ly backslash Millbrae Coach. And so that concludes a very quick update. Mayor?
Thank you. That wasn't, that wasn't that short. That was a very complete report.
I thought it was talking too fast. A lot of numbers. Thank you.
I'm going to move to the approval of the minutes. There is none. We have no oral reports from City Committee or Commissions. So I'm going to move to public comment. And public comment will be for any person that is wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. Okay, I'm going to look. Oh, I, no. I do not see any public comment.
It looks like Councilmember Snyder has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think it was a public comment.
Public comment? No, I think it went down.
No, I'm sorry, Mayor. I had my hand raised from the beginning, if I could take a moment of time.
Sure.
Okay, um, hold on. Um, before we get to the rest of the meeting, I would like to say something. Regrettably, at the meeting on May 24th, I made some comments to Mayor Leva and the City Council regarding the chamber. I stated, "Mayor, I don't want to embarrass you, but the chamber does not want to work with you or the council after what happened last year regarding the Art and Wine Festival." That was incorrect, and I apologize to the mayor and to the council, and hope that we can move forward in a spirit of cooperation. Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Apology accepted. All right, anybody? I don't see any other hands. Oh. Councilmember Fung? Is your hand up, or am I missing something?
Yes, Madam, Madam Mayor. I like to pull. No, it is my hands up. I think we're done with public comment. I don't see any in central public.
I was just looking, but we're going to go to consent.
I'd like to ask the item number six. I like to pull item number six calendar for regular discussion. Yes, I need to recuse from one of the decisions as it involves a family member.
So do you want to pull it, or can you just recuse yourself from that?
Well, there are multiple appointments in there. So I want to be able to make sure that I can vote for other.
Helpful. I'm not sure how to do this.
It's not the family members involved.
Yeah, Mayor, I think there's one. Actually, the only items on the agenda are youth advisory this evening and economic vitality. The other two appointments for those commissions will be at the next meeting. So I believe the council member has a conflict on both of those. So he can just conflict himself.
Sister cities.
I apologize. I apologize. Okay. We'll have to pull it, then, Mayor.
Okay. So why don't we pull the item?
Six.
Item number six. So for consent calendar. Item five, the adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safety in person and declaring that the City Council, because city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure health and safety in the public. Number seven, adopt a resolution approving the execution of the Sixth Amendment to the agreement with Millbrae Community Television in the amount of 21,000 for broadcasting, video, and channel management services for the fiscal years 2021, 2022, and a two-year extension for broadcasting, video, and channel management services, and support grant for the fiscal years 2022, 2023, and 23, 2023 and 24, in the amount not to exceed 222,900 for the two-year period. Item number eight, to approve the motion. Approve by motion the quarterly investment schedule for the third quarter of the fiscal year 2021 and 22. And item number nine, resolution authorizing the City Manager or does the need to execute an agreement with the County of San Mateo to bribe officers? Oh, we're going to pull that one. I'm sorry. Item number nine is not included in the consent. So it's five, seven, and eight. Motion to approve? Five, seven, and eight. We have a motion, and we have a second. Can we please call for the vote?
I'm sorry, who motion for a second?
I think it was Sanders.
Councilmember Snyder, and then I'll second it.
Can I make a comment on consent calendar?
Oh, of course. Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Item number seven, MCTV. I just wanted to call and support MCTV. They've been working very hard in modernizing their programming, and they've become a major asset. In fact, the Lions Club has supported them with thousands of dollars, showing that their value has been very instrumental to the well-being of our city. And I fully hope that, I'm pretty sure it's not controversial, but I want to tell the audience that they've been doing great work, and they've been a great asset to the city of Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you, former Mayor Lee. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Can we have a vote, please?
Of course. Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Consent items number five, seven, and eight, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. I'll go back to item number six. It's city commissions and committee recruitment and appointments. And we need a motion and a second on this, please.
Mayor, I think with your permission, could we separate the sister city from the economic vitality, and therefore Councilman Fung can vote on the sister city? Is that? I would like to make that motion. Let's do sister city.
No motion. Just give direction, and we'll all agree.
Okay, nominate, nominate Ms. Wong Po for reappointment to the Millbrae Sister City Commission.
Okay, I will second that. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
Chi Ying Po has been reappointed to Sister Cities Commission by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Councilmember Snyder, can you please make the second motion?
Certainly. Just would like to nominate the reappointment of Margaret Ning, who is also known as Margaret Fung, to the Economic Vitality Committee. And that interview team consisted of myself and Vice Mayor Pappen.
And I'll make the second on that. Can we please have a vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
He's going to.
I recuse from that, I recuse of that vote.
Apologize. Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
Okay. The City Council reappoint Margaret Ning to Economic Vitality Advisory Committee by a vote of four to zero one, with Councilmember Fung recused.
Mayor, if I may, the, both Vice Mayor Pappen and Councilman Fung, and I did a whole slew of interviews. They'll be coming back at the next council meeting. City Clerk, perhaps we could divide those up to make it easier to understand on the agenda? That would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. So move to public hearing, of which we have no public hearing tonight. Existing business. We completed our business. We'll go to new business. And item number 10 is to waive the first reading and introduce, introduce an ordinance amending the municipal code, Chapter 3.30, Uniform Transient Occupancy Tax, increasing the transient occupancy tax, hotel tax rate from 12% to 14%. And counsel, this takes action after we hear from Mike. Finance Director?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. So let me get this on the screen here. And today we'll be talking about the transient occupancy tax. And this is the first reading of the proposed ordinance. So just a little bit of background. Millbrae's transient occupancy tax, or TOT, or more commonly known as the Hotel Motel Tax, first enacted back in 1966 and was last updated in 2010, when it went from 10 to 12%. Since that time, additional needs have cropped up that impact the residents and the hospitality businesses. Most notably, the need for additional safety services, public safety services, as well as the repair of city streets and storm drains. The city is in need of additional funding to maintain and enhance these critical services on which both residents and businesses rely on. So just a little background on fiscal information as well. We currently do have a $2 million structural deficit in this fiscal year, 2223, in the general fund. A 2% increase in the city's existing TOT rate from 12 to 14% would generate approximately $1.5 million additional revenue annually. And this is based off of pre-COVID numbers. So just wanted to kind of briefly give counsel what the timeline was and what had occurred and what's scheduled for the future, should council choose. So back in February, between February 3rd and the 18th, a community survey was conducted by Ngoppi Research. And we received the results of the community survey, which we shared with the Finance and Budget Subcommittee on May 6. We went back to council on June 28th, and council directed staff to come back with an ordinance ballot measure language and to engage with stakeholders and hotel operators. So during this time period, we did engage with the hotel operators and with a few community groups, and we're continuing to do so. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a bit. But today, we're looking at the first reading of the proposed ordinance. And in two weeks, if council chooses, we'll be looking at a second reading of the proposed ordinance and an adoption of a resolution to approve the placement of a TOT increase measure on the November 8th, 2022 ballot. Just another important date to look at is August 12th, which is the deadline for submission of resolution to the San Mateo County. So the city had set up multiple meetings with the hotel operators. We engaged with them. We heard their concerns. City also met with other community stakeholders, such as Rotary and some other clubs. And we continue to meet with their community stakeholders in the coming weeks to elicit more feedback. So just to kind of show council what we're actually asking to update in the ordinance in itself is the section over here that I'm highlighting. It's going to, we would, we would recommend to update that from 12 to 14%. And the other change we're looking at is going from January 1st, 2010 to January 1st, 2023, if the ordinance were to pass and if there was a majority vote by the voters on November 8. So just kind of in summary, and we're recommending to waive the first reading, be on the title, and adopt the ordinance. And I'm open for any questions.
Do we have any council questions? Do we have? Oh, we do. Councilmember Snyder?
Hi. I, I actually, Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve this, but I have some questions about what happens. I haven't, I don't think I've been, oh, yes, I was. Once we approve this, then we can no longer talk about it as a city council. And Mike, when I was reading through the staff report, I just think it would be really good for our public who will be voting on this, that we have charts that show which cities have what TOT, when was the last time they raised their TOT, and also the source and use of funds for what Millbrae can or can't do with that. Just, let's make it so easy for our public to understand why we really need to do this and how the money, how we're keeping it in the general fund, but how it's going to come back to making Millbrae better from the number-one issue of filling potholes to the other, other areas of concern that the public had. But I'm, I'm, when the time is appropriate, Mayor, happy to make a motion. And thank you, Mr. Sung, for the work.
So I wanted, maybe we should hear from public first, and then we'll go with the motion.
Very good.
Do we have any public comment on this item? I don't see any. So Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Snyder has made a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holliver? Is that a second or a question?
No, it's a question, actually.
Go ahead.
Can you elaborate a little bit more about the public outreach that has been done thus far in the meetings with the hotel operators? What today, what was their view about this?
So we've met with three hotel operators that have accepted our request. We have a scheduled meeting with another hotel operator on Friday, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Justine. And we've actually reached out to a couple more hotel operators that they've canceled at the last minute, but are waiting to hear back from them to reschedule. And the hotel operators, obviously, are looking at this from a perspective of a business. They did talk to us and give us some of the concerns that they have. There's been some, they're looking at seeing what can they do? What can we do to kind of be, have a mutually beneficial situation for both the city? Which could include, you know, continued engagement, economic development. Definitely some things were exchanged on that. And also, we've met with community groups. In fact, I just met with the Rotary Group today at their meeting at noon and talked to them about that, gave them some insight as to what this really is. This measure is an increase to the TOT, which is a tax that's actually paid by the people that visit the city, that stay at the hotels, that stay at the short-term rentals. So kind of gave them a little bit of information on that as well as what the results of the community survey were, which included, of course, the highest priorities from the community, which were public safety and the roads and the needs. So a lot of input we received was, okay, so this is something that we're looking to basically help the city out with increasing as well as maintaining some of the services that we want to, you know, provide for both the residents and the businesses. So that's the type of engagement that we've done so far.
Okay. And from the hotel operators specifically, was there, sorry, was there feedback more along the lines of, we don't want this, or more along the lines of, you know, if this is approved, what type of service enhancements are we going to see?
Probably closer to the latter. I mean, I think they want something that can benefit both of us. I do recall, like, from years past, something that we were looking at was more advertising. And that's something council can take a look at as well. And then that could be mutually beneficial to both the city and to the hotel operators.
Well, one, you know, suggestion that I had at the previous meeting, it didn't seem to have any support on it, was to phase in this increase. So in effect, it would be, for example, 13% starting January 1st, 2023, and 14% January 1st, 2024. So it would be a one-year delay from seeing the full, you know, revenue increase from this. I know other cities, I believe, San Bruno or Foster City, when they had increased their TOT from 12 to 14%, they did it over two years instead of all at once. I'm willing to put that on the table again. If nobody else is willing to back to support that, I would be supportive of the motion on the table.
Let's hear from Vice Mayor and see if she's going to support you.
I am not. I think I should just go for it. It's, you know, I think the only way, Councilmember Holliver suggesting it is that that would be written into the legislation. And I just think, rip the Band-Aid off, go for it. Best way to go, because we have to do a campaign on this anyway. So regrettably, I cannot support Councilmember Holliver on this one.
Yeah, I probably won't support him either, but I think that Mike could give, to Councilmember Snyder's point, where we are in comparison to the North and the South. And we're pretty equal. Is that correct? We're going to kind of catch up with everybody?
We will. And right now, we're actually below average. The majority of the cities in San Mateo County are at 14%, with one, I believe, at 15%. There are a few at 12%, but the majority around the airport are at 14%.
And Mike, when was the last time that we raised this?
Um, last time we raised this was January 1st, 2010. And that was from 10 to 12%.
So I would say we took our time, Councilmember Holliver. All right. We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
Perfect. Can we call for the vote?
Of course. And this is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance amendment.
Correct.
Mayor, did you want to open it for public comment?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, though.
All right. Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Aye.
The motion to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance amending the municipal code, The motion to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance in municipal code, chapter three point three zero, Uniform Transient Occupation uh, Occupancy Tax, Increase the transient occupancy tax rate from twelve to fourteen percent. Um, motion passes by five to zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have an informational item, which is an update on the status of the preparation of an ordinance to pro- to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products. And I'm sure we have, who's going to be doing this report?
I can introduce our Human Resources Director slash Assistant City Manager, Isabel Carlos.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Uh, if you will, just give me one uh, brief moment while I pull up the presentation here. Make sure I do this correctly. Okay, sounds great. Good evening, um, Honorable Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. This item is an informational update on the status of the ordinance to prohibit sales of flavored tobacco products in the city of Millbrae. In today's presentation, you'll hear an introduction and background on the topic. You'll hear about policies enacted across the various levels of government, including federal, state, county, local. I'll conclude and then I'll open for a Q and A session. So according to the C D C, a person's S I P code is a greater indicator of their health, even more so than their genetic code. Thus, the social, such as peer pressure and environmental conditions of our built environment, weigh heavily as a determinant of a person's health. Therefore, policymakers across all levels of government are enacting policies to create healthier places and healthier lives for their constituents. The statistics that you see on your screen are alarming and they speak volumes. Studies show that tobacco products, including flavored tobacco disproportionately affect youth and minority groups, including communities of color, people with low social economic status, people with mental disabilities, and L G B T Q plus communities. So as policymakers for the city of Millbrae, you have not only been supportive, but you have been leaders in making our community healthier. Individually, some of you have expressed your desire to enact a policy that would prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco in Millbrae. When we say flavored tobacco products, we're talking about a variety of products uh, from cigarettes to to blunt uh, wraps to vape. All these products that you see here on your screen are sold in stores um, in flavors such as mint, breakfast cereal, cotton candy, grape, and a variety of uh, alluring flavors. The future ordinance would prohibit the sale, not the use, but the sale of all these product uh, products if they are flavored. But this is not what the products look like when they're marketed to children. In fact, this is what the products look like. Flavored tobacco products come in a variety of different flavors, different types. As you can see, they, they look like candy, they smell like candy, and some parents may not be able to distinguish them from candy at first glance. These products are made to be marketed to children, to our youth. Uh, they target, uh, the, the tobacco industry targets the youth, particularly youth of color. They could show up in a variety of venues, corner stores, advertisements, cultural events, music sponsorships, and coupons. Flavors get our, our young people trying. Addictive nicotine keeps them hooked for a lifetime. So from an environmental standpoint, they harm our environment with litter, with negative soil impacts. And at, at their worst, they can end a person's lifespan sooner. Previously, I mentioned that the policymakers are combating this public health issue across all sectors. I would like to think that the federal government encompasses a greater sphere of influence, and it does, but it works slower. As you can see, they have enacted two laws in two thousand nine. President Obama signed into law the Family Smoking and Prevention Act, which prohibited the sale of flavored cigarettes, except menthol. Um, but it does not prohibit the sale of other flavored tobacco products other than cigarettes. The state has enacted two laws relating to tobacco use. The first one is called STAKE, Stop Tobacco Access to Kids Enforcement, which prohibits a person uh, from selling tobacco products to any person under the age of twenty-one years of age. And also Senate Bill seven ninety-three, which is more recent. It was approved in August twenty-twenty, and it enacted a statewide prohibition of flavored tobacco products. However, it did explicitly uh, not preempt the adoption and implementation of county and local ordinances that would impose greater restrictions for their jurisdictions. And shortly after it was signed into law, the tobacco industry filed a referendum that made it i- into the ballot for the November twenty-twenty-two election as Proposition um, thirty-one. And therein, it suspended the enforcement of the bill. And if it wins, it would repeal and overturn Senate Bill seven thirty-nine. Currently, it's suspended. It could be overturned. That leaves two levels of government. So what is the county doing? In two thousand eighteen, the county enacted an ordinance to restrict the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies and the sale of tobacco products in unincorporated areas. They, they have left it up to each municipality to enact their own laws for their respective jurisdictions in regards to flavored tobacco. So the county is currently reviewing their ordinance to include several amendments. These amendments include new definitions for tobacco products and electronic smoking devices. They add restrictions for new tobacco retailers within one thousand feet of youth-populated areas. They add restrictions for new tobacco retailers within five hundred feet of one another. And they also have increased fines for violations of the ordinance. There are also discussions at the county level to amend the county's tobacco retailer permit program to require municipalities who participate in the program to enact policies that mirror the county policies if they wish to continue their participation in the program. That brings me to my next slide. As participants of the county's tobacco retailer permit program, uh, the county administers the program activity. They issue permits to the city of Millbrae retailers that sell the tobacco products here in the city. They conduct the enforcement for the program. And as a small city, the participation in this program is, is, has been effective and efficient in, in the administration of the tobacco retailers. So what would be the next step? Staff recommends that we follow closely the activity at the county level. And upon adoption of any amendments by the county, the staff can bring back a city ordinance to be consistent with the county policy as regards to the tobacco retailer permit program, and also to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products if it is not banned by the county. And we would bring that for a council consideration in, in a future meeting. At, at this time, it, it also, if there's specific direction from the council on specific products that they wish to, to ban um, in addition to the flavored tobacco products. Um, and/or if uh, you have direction on the implementation and enforcement of the policy, we can take that direction. For example, some municipalities are banning menthol e-cigarettes and some are not. Um, as far as the implementation, I've seen a model that um, makes the law effective ninety days after it's approved by the council, but the enforcement starts an additional ninety days after that. That allows for the implementation plan to be solidified and for proper engagement of the retailers uh, so that they can also comply. But again, these specifics are at the pleasure of the council. Now, this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So at this time, council, we do not have to have a vote, but I'm happy to hear any comments before I move to public comments. Vice Mayor?
Uh, yes, wonderful presentation. Thank you very, very much. I wonder if you reached out to the school district since the whole idea here is that we make sure children are not getting hooked on any of these things or actually using any of these things. So my question would be, does the school district have any information on what items have been confiscated at school? What are um, beautiful and I'm sure perfect children are not using in school? But that would be interesting in order to make our ordinance impactful and efficient.
That's an excellent recommendation. I have reached out personally to the county of Seminole. They've been a, an excellent resource and, and, and a crash course for, for me to be able to present this, this item. And we, I've also connected with members from, actually the co-chair, one of the co-chairs from the Tobacco Coalition, but we have not yet reached out to the schools and, and there's time to do that. Now we can, we can partner up with them as well.
That would be helpful. And then I think just as a secondary question, um, I do believe people should be offered an opportunity to get through their inventory or dispose of it in one way. That's um, not of a big financial impact to them. Uh, so I, I'd be curious if we get any comments regarding that. Because we don't want to negatively impact the businesses, but they need to know that it will not be allowed in the future. Thank you.
Understood. We can work with retailers.
Councilmember Snyder?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Ms. Carlos. That was a great presentation. Love your slides. I, I think to, to Vice Mayor's question, uh, it, when the county comes, in my understanding, the county will come back with an updated ordinance that we would then modify ours to match them. And then they also assist with the enforcement. Is that correct? Like they do for a lot of those zero-waste issues?
That's correct.
Very good. And most of you, sorry.
Yes, most of the municipalities in the county are part of the, the tobacco retailer uh, permit program.
And and typically, the way the county has done it for a host of other ordinances is they pass the ordinance, and then there's a time period to let the retailers stop purchasing and use up supply before it goes into enforcement. At least that's what's happening with, as the solid waste laws. Is, do we know if that's what the county's plan would be?
It's, it's like a ninety day and a ninety day, and so they have time to like, like Council Vice Mayor said, ninety days to stop buying it, but ninety more days to sell it, to get it out. Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was one model that I, that I saw.
We can, we can change that up when that comes forward for the second. Yeah.
And, and they also uh, engage the, the retailers early on in the process as well so that they, they can hear feedback and, and learn about the potential concerns.
Okay. And this is slightly off topic because I think we already don't allow it. But when I have been at movie, Under the Stars, especially if the movie is a slightly older one, a couple of years ago, it was um, sing-along to John Travolta movie. Um, and people were vaping. And, you know, I was there with my family and I didn't wear my city council hat, so I wasn't enforcing. But is it currently illegal for anyone to be vaping or smoking on public property? And if we just, when we roll this out, it's just another opportunity to educate the public. Nobody wants to get into anybody's face during the movie night, but it's full of little children. And in fact, my mother, who has C O P D, and there's still vapor coming out of vaping equipment. So thank you. Good work.
Looking at those issues. Thank you.
Councilmember Fung? Unmute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you, Ms. Yeah, thank, thank you, Ms. Carlos, for putting this uh, in a presentation together. Um, have you been in touch, or if you have not, would you please get in touch with the school district and the county health uh, to discuss the issue of vaping among our teens uh, and our high schoolers and middle schoolers? Um, it is my understanding that it is a, a quite prevalent problem among our teens and, and how easy and how accessible these vaping product is to our teens. Um, and how highly used they are, uh, and how dangerous it is to um, you know, to continue to have these products available to our teens. And they can contribute it to a lot of sort of learning disorder, learning disabilities, and wood swings and other serious health issues uh, among our younger population. So I think if, you know, as we move forward on these um, studies and possibly legislations in the future, um, I'd like to see us take um, a very bold and tough stance on these vaping products to be sold within our city because they are targeted to our youth. And I want to make sure that these things are not, uh, we're not going to allow these uh, products to be continued targeting our younger.
I'll definitely reach out to the schools and, and get more information on the vaping.
Thank you, council. Uh, we have a public member that would like to speak, Ian Chu. Ian, you have three minutes, please.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Ian. I am a rising first-year college student. And I want to share some opinions on how tobacco affect my peers in school. So um, tobacco can actually cause disengagement of students' education in school. According to my own experience, I have seen students were vaping in the bathroom, and my other classmates were afraid of getting inside the bathroom because of the smells. And also, they were afraid of the menthol saturation uh, from the people uh, who had tobacco. So it actually decreased the quality of teaching when students see someone using the tobacco on campus. And uh, the vaping products can also easily to be uh, to buy from peers or installs, especially having tobaccos under uh, peer pressures. The action of having tobacco is devastating to a person. I know some people want to use tobacco to relieve stress, but actually, it can cause uh, many bad effects on your behavior of studying at school and many negative impacts on a person's health condition. For example, um, it can bring illness to the lung functions. Um, it can cause cancer, cause uh, hearing loss, vision loss, etc. So I believe it is very important and necessary to discontinue selling the tobacco to the youth community.
Thank you, Ian. Amy Lauer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Ian, for your personal story and comments. Uh, and thank you also, uh, Ms. Carlos, for that incredibly thorough report and as well as the pre-read that was offered in the agenda. I appreciate all the work that was done and the, you know, the, the deep level of research that you were able to get your hands on through the county. Um, Vice Mayor, as a anecdotal uh, surveyor of one, um, I will say that um, I kicked this, I, I was one of the people who became very concerned about vaping when I saw uh, wrappers, uh, wrappers and things I didn't even know what they were, cartridge-looking things that had names like aloe grape and strawberry ice cream. And I started looking into them, and it's the wrappers that Ms. Carlos had in her report, and those wrappers were all over Taylor Middle School. So as Ian said, it's an issue in um, high school. And anecdotally, I would say it's also an issue in middle school. So thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Carlos, my question is that with all the research, is it possible to understand the cost to Millbrae, the resources required, if we went off on our own, like ten of other cities in Seminole County have, and passed an ordinance without waiting for the county? Or do you believe that the timing of the county passing is so close that we might as well just wait? Because when I hear ninety days and ninety days, that's six months. And school will be back in session, I believe it's August tenth. So um, uh, you know, I would rather now than later. So with Half Moon Bay, um, uh, San Carlos, Burlingame, Pacifica can have these ordinances. I'm just curious, uh, what is stopping us from moving forward? And uh, I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Adrian?
Uh, Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Adrian. I'm a high school student that grew up in Millbrae, and I feel compelled to speak tonight on behalf of my peers. I would like to urge our council to ban all flavored tobacco products as well as all vaping products. Tobacco is highly addictive with exclusively negative effects. Tobacco is also widely used as a gateway drug where people start with smoking, but then large, but then start experimenting with more harmful and addictive substances. Also, similar to Ian, there is a very large smoking problem at my school. During brunch, I'll see other students using their vapes or very openly blowing smoke rings. When I go to the bathrooms, there's always a group of girls in the largest stall skipping class and vaping. Students are valuing getting a quick high over their academics and their health, which are clear signs of addiction. And I feel that it is unfair that we continue having impressionable students get addicted to vaping while also allowing the tobacco company to target our youth and poison them with such highly addictive and harmful products. For this reason, I urge the city of Millbrae to ban all flavored tobacco products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adrian.
Um, make it this Adrian's phone, name, please.
Adrian, do you want to give your name, your first and last name, and your address would be helpful, too?
Sure. My last, my first name is Adrian Malasens Fung. My address is two thirty-eight Sebastian.
And for Amy, um, Amy, I apologize, but I, normally if we are in Amy?
Amy?
Yes.
Uh, if we are in council, if we are in council. Oh, my, got to echo here, sorry. Would ask the, uh, would ask staff to go out to answer your question. So maybe uh, tomorrow or somebody will reach out to you with the answer to your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so this was informational. We heard from council and we heard from public. Anything else? Is Gina, Gina's your hand up again? Go ahead.
Um, I would just like to acknowledge that the original legislation was by our own Senator Jerry Hill. And so thank you for his efforts in starting this ball rolling. And yeah, if we are to move forward with an ordinance, Isabel, I'm a little confused here. It sounds like the county has something in place right now.
They they have something in place for the pharmacies and for unincorporated areas, but not for the municipalities, not for the incorporated areas.
Okay, so I would hope that we can move forward. I know this is just informational now, but move forward sooner rather than later. And that whatever ordinance we implement also has within it a kind of an automatic acceptance of whatever the county pushes thereafter. So we don't have to keep coming back and going, oh, we missed something. Oh, we, you know, it would, I don't know if that's legally permissible. But that would be, I think, somewhat more efficient.
I think it needs to go to the entire council and not directions of just the county. So we'll bring it back. Oh, Michael's going to weigh in. Thank you, Michael.
Suggesting on the original writing.
Right. So quickly, the the county has a countywide enforcement permitting enforcement process. And I think that's the reason staff has asked us to hold off, just to make sure that the or the ordinance that we adopt is going to work with them in terms of a seamless enforcement mechanism. Otherwise, I think we're pretty close to being ready. I think once we understand what they're going to do, it sounds like they're going to act pretty quickly. The period for delay was really something we might do as well, just in terms of how quickly we put the ordinance into place. And there was discussion in terms of allowing people to sell off their inventory. So I I think as soon as we find out what the county is doing, we'll have an opportunity to act pretty quickly on the ordinance. But but we do want to make sure we're coordinated with them in terms of their enforcement because they they are our enforcement mechanism with regards to retailers. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, and I think the idea was just to wait not not very long. And according to direction from our city manager to to wait a little bit and then move forward if if there's additional delays at the county level.
So to Amy's comment in the public, it's it's basically not that anybody's going to write anything different, but we need to police this. So we need to have backup here. And that's what we're we're betting on here. So we, once it's in place, we can enforce it. Looks, I don't know whose hands, Councilmember Schneider, is your hand up again?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to add to what you just said to the public. When the county does the enforcement effort, it's actually saving City of Millbrae money that way. And so it it sometimes it really does make sense to partner with the county and their enforcement agents.
I think our chief's on here. Christina, did you want to weigh in on this?
Sorry about that. Sorry. Yeah, so actually, the county, actually, the sheriff's office had a tobacco grant that I applied for prior to me coming to Millbrae. And I I do not believe that it was utilized and it's actually for enforcement for anyone that sells tobacco, any kind of tobacco to minors. And, you know, if we're, we have the ability to enforce it within the Millbrae city limits, then we can enforce it and we can work with the city and I could work with Tom in regards to enforcing that ordinance. But, you know, I do agree that, you know, it is geared, all the flavors are geared towards juveniles and and kids and, you know, there are flavors that are, you know, familiar to us as kids growing up and, you know, cereals and candy. And so I I think that it would really be beneficial if we can have a stronger presence in regards to enforcing that tobacco. So or so I I'd be more than willing to work with Tom currently as the chief and then as sheriff elect. So absolutely, anything that we can help, you know, not get kids hooked on these very toxic and and, you know, tobaccos, I I would be all for it.
Thank you, Christina.
You're welcome.
Tom, is your hand up?
I mean, I'm just going to echo the comments and and address Amy Lauer's question real quick here. That it is cost beneficial for us to mirror the county's ordinance and have them not only review and permit tobacco license, but also the enforcement. So, you know, we've studied that and and their assistance. They've been doing it for tobacco permits and then they've been very effective and we have a terrific relationship with them. We actually, we actually closed down one of the, one of the establishments that they found. And actually, the sheriff's offices think now we're selling to minor. So the the relationship with the county and that enforcement is 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 well worth it.
Okay, sounds like we're all on the same page here. We just got to go through the, go through the process and we'll make make this happen in Millbrae. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to move to item number twelve is a designation of voting delegate and up to two alternates for the twenty twenty-two League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo. And guys, we need some action on this.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to be attending because I'm on a League of Cities Subcommittee, so I will be there. So I'd like to volunteer, please.
I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Pappen. Are you going to second yourself?
Oh, sure. Okay, there you go.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Schneider, you have her hand raised?
I will also be there. I'm presenting on September eighth, but happy to support Vice Mayor Pappen. She gets to sit then on the other side of the curtain. It's, I got to do it last year. You also have to stay till the bitter end, but I'm happy to support the Vice Mayor.
Awesome.
And I'm there for backup should anything happen. I'm there for the whole time.
Okay, so we we have, I I would nominate as well Councilmember Schneider. So we have, we need a voting, should we voting delegate? Gina, you want to say it till the end?
Yeah, I've got some committee thing I'm on, so, but I think we can have an alternate too.
Yes, we'll do Councilmember Schneider as an alternate?
Sure.
Awesome. I I make that nomination, I I make that, I'm not, I make that motion. Does anybody want to?
I I think I seconded.
Perfect, for both.
Yes.
There.
Accepted.
All right, can we call for the vote, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Halliburton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
The city council appointed Vice Mayor Gina Pappen as a voting delegate and Councilmember Dan Snyder as the alternate for the twenty twenty-two League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo by the vote of practice.
Item number thirteen is a resolution authorizing the city manager or designate to execute execute an agreement with Nielsen, Merkisomer, Merk Summer, Merk Summer, Hartnello, Gross and Leonel LLP for state legislative advocacy and lobbying services. And we have a some sort of presentation, please.
We do, Mayor. A brief staff report from, again, our human resources director, assistant city manager, Ms. Isabel Carlos.
Just before we start that, Councilmember Snyder's your hand up? No, okay.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. If I may have a brief moment to pull up the presentation. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you that you see is to secure state legislative advocacy and lobbying services from Nielsen, Merk Summer, Harinello, Gross and Leonie. And to assist me tonight with the presentation and so that you can also meet her, we have senior counsel Michelle Rubacava on screen with us. She will present a few slides later on in the presentation and then both of us will be available for questions. As you can see from the agenda tonight, we'll do a brief introduction, a firm overview. We'll review the agreement scope for the proposed agreement. We, you will have an opportunity to see who the engagement team would be. We'll conclude and then we'll do a Q and A session. The council has set forth as part of its vision for the future, specific initiatives that define the Millbrae community of tomorrow, focusing on built environment, sustainable city designs, infrastructure investments, quality of life and neighborhood enhancement, fiscal sustainability through a strong economic development base and outstanding stewardship of our environmental responsibility that supports strategies to bring the council's vision to fruition. One critical element to progressing the strategic plan for a stronger community is to collaborate where possible and to forcefully influence when necessary the alignment and the support from other governmental and administrative bodies and boards that impact the interests of our city. Specifically, the the public policies issues that could be positively impacted through the proposed agreement include the areas on on your screen, including transportation, homelessness, land use, environmental issues, economic development, health, public safety and fiscal issues, to name some. Nielsen Merk Summer is one of the preeminent firms in the country. They serve a national clientele that includes many of Fortune tops twenty-five largest US companies and also an array of governmental agencies. The firm provides services that include government law, advocacy, lobbying and strategic advice regarding the legislative, regulatory and administrative processes. With that and without further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce senior counsel for Nielsen Merk Summer, Ms. Michelle Rubacava, and she will tell you a little bit more about herself, the services that her firm provides and also the specific services that can be provided to the City of Millbrae through the proposed agreement. And Ms. Rubacava, if you if you could just let me know when you're ready for the next slide, I will continue.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council members. As stated, my name is Michelle Rubacava. I'm senior counsel at Nielsen Merk Summer and I am a local government contract lobbyist. I appreciate the time this evening to discuss the proposal of potentially partnering with the City of Millbrae for advocacy services in Sacramento, California. So really quickly, just so you know, I have over twenty-five years of political experience. I started as legislative staff back in nineteen ninety-seven for some very distinguished legislators, a former budget chair, Senator Byron Share, who's from the area. I worked with him for quite some time. Then I went out of the legislature and I went into what's called the Thirte House as a contract lobbyist. My firm and myself directly, we, I do lead the local government team for our law firm. We represent five counties and three cities, San Diego, Marin, Contra Costa, Yolo and San Benito are our counties. We represent the city. San San Benito. Yes. And then for the cities, Chula Vista, Visalia and Paris, P E R R I S in Riverside County. But I think that one of the things that I wanted to talk to you about is some of the priorities that the city has and how employing a an advocate can really help. I know that you're going to be having a new assembly member very soon. I know that that assembly member, hopefully, if everything goes the way things are being predicted, will be a friendly ear for City of Millbrae's requests. But it is a situation where the squeaky wheel gets the oil. What an advocate does for their local government clients is they are the voice, eyes and ears for you in Sacramento County. For instance, for this last legislative session, which started in twenty twenty-two, we had our budget process. It was a little bit of an opaque process, which is not usually the case. But because of the pandemic, things have been happening kind of behind closed doors. And so there were a lot of conversations that I had to have on behalf of my clients to make sure that some of their legislative and budget priorities were enacted. Just as an example, I was able to secure eight point five million dollars for the City of Paris, five million for the City of Chula Vista, twenty-five million for Chula Vista that was associated with legislation. So not just budget, but a legislative appropriation. Contra Costa County, I was able to secure twenty million. Yolo County received six point five million and the County of Marin is going to be receiving two million dollars. Now, it's great to bring home resources to localities, but there are other ways that we can partner to secure your legislative priorities. There is always legislation that impacts how the city operates. There are bills that are currently going on right now that the league, as your umbrella association, does engage in. But it really does bring a certain color when you have an individual voice of a city. Because Millbrae has a specific voice, has specific concerns, has specific issues that maybe other cities aren't bringing to light. For instance, some legislation that I know is impacting cities, you know, statewide, has to do with housing. Everybody's looking to create more affordable housing. There's a bill currently going through the legislature, AB twenty eleven, which is an assembly member Wix bill, that would take retail spaces and just allow for the affordable housing to be developed. The problem there, even though it sounds like great, what we really need is housing. The problem with that bill is that it reduces local control, right? And so then you have to kind of step in front of a bill and say, your bill is a great idea, but let me tell you why it's written in a poor way or why it's going to impact negatively some of these constituencies. Another topic that was discussed in legislative sessions in the past, what had to do with micro enterprise kitchens, right? So during the pandemic, there was this conversation about how do you let people kind of find a living? And the conversation of letting people, you know, sell food that they made in their kitchens was a really big legislative conversation that had to do with city, cities and their local control. Public safety is always an issue. Transportation, I know, is a big issue for the City of Millbrae. So just want to talk about how having an advocate can actually push you guys forward. Some of the things that my firm does very well is obviously we sit down and do a deep dive with any new client. So if our firm was to be selected and put on contract for the City of Millbrae, the first thing that I would do is I would come into the city or we would set up some Zoom calls and I would meet with the mayor, the vice mayor, individual city council members and then your city department heads. Because there are issues at the very like granular level that as an advocate maybe need to be brought up to the forefront. So we sit down and we talk about what is the priority for the incoming legislative session? Are there bills that you want to sponsor? Are there, you know, policy areas that you need for your advocate to engage in? Are there budgetary priorities that you would like the advocate to try and bring home to the city? All of these bullet points on the scope of service, in addition to anything that the city might feel is necessary. I really want you all to consider me as a government problem solver. There is no problem either at this, you know, mostly at the state, but at the state either with the administration, with a regulatory agency or at the legislature, that you shouldn't at least reach out to your advocate and say, there's a problem that we're having as a city. What do you think some potential solutions could be? And the solution could be legislative, it could be regulatory, it could be with the Attorney General's Office. There are so many ways to tackle a problem. And as a Sacramento expert, I'm just here to be feedback and to kind of help you drive your priorities forward. Next slide, Ms. Carlos. So at Nielsen Merk Summer, we have six lobbyist attorneys, but we do what's called team law. And so on any client, we have two lobbyists and that's for the benefit of the client. So if there's a situation where, for instance, I tested positive for COVID yesterday, so I'm quarantining at home, there's someone who can help and kind of catches the ball. So there's never a gap for the client. For the city of Millbrae, I would suggest adding my colleague, Maddie Cooper. She is former legislative staff. She, as well as every single member of our firm, has excellent relationships in the legislature, at the regulatory agencies, in the administration. There is some changes going on in the Newsom administration. If you know, Ana Mata Santos, who's been his Cabinet Secretary for a very long time, is stepping away, Keely Bosler, the Department of Finance Director, who runs the budget. She's also stepping out. So there is some, you know, rotation happening there. But what really ends up happening is we live and breathe in this world. And so the people that are going to be tapped to follow them, we probably already know, they probably live in a different space. I really would like to open it up to any questions at this time about what benefits or possible obstacles you may see in bringing on an advocate.
Before we take Q and A, I do want to make a staff recommendation at this time that the city council approve the agreement for state legislative advocacy and lobbying services with Nielsen Merximer. And if retained by the city, the firm would provide, as mentioned, experienced and professional advocacy and lobbying support at the state level on legislative and administrative issues affecting the city's interests and also help us secure favorable legislative and fiscal outcomes for the city as presented earlier. And this concludes our presentation and we can take a Q and A session at this time.
That was great presentation. It is so nice to think that we would have this in our pocket. I can't even believe, I mean, this is like right up my alley. I have seven more meetings and I'm really disappointed because I could just see what this is going to do for the city of Millbrae. I'm really excited. I'm going to give an example of something that possibly, Michelle, you can say how you could deal with this. But with regards to on some agendas in other cities where they're bringing up things like transfer taxes because they need their infrastructure budget to come into place. But yet, as we all know, we have a surplus in Sacramento where we could so come together with other cities and lobby with our legislators in Sacramento to help us out with this. And I don't know if everybody has the details of what happens like in Menlo Park, where they've received money because they have connections in Sacramento. And boy, Michelle, if this goes through tonight, I can just see such, I don't know, you can answer my question with how you can handle something like this, but it could be such a green light for Millbrae with so many sources.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only thing that I'll add to your comments is that unfortunately, it really is, if you look at the budget that just passed, the allocations that are given to individual cities and counties and organizations do have representation. And that is because they take, it's not that you can't as a city go and ask for those things on your own. You as council members have those relationships, right? You have the relationship with Senator Becker. You have the relationship with Assemblymember Mullen. What ends up happening is that you make that one ask because you have so much on your plate. And then unless there's someone in the background constantly bringing it to the forefront, it just gets either dropped off or delayed. And so it really is just that tenacity of pushing the city's priorities constantly to say like, hey, don't forget about us. Hey, city of Millbrae is here. Hey, remember we're your constituencies too.
So Michelle, that would be something that you would take on?
Correct.
Right on. That's what I wanted to hear. And, you know, grants are great and we have to apply for all these grants and fit into these molds, but relationships are really, it's not what you know, it's who you know kind of deal? Yes?
It is. It's Sacramento and I think, you know, there is, I think what's really great about Nielsen Merximer too is that we have a bipartisan team of lobbyists, right? We are bipartisan. Our client portfolio is very diversified. We have business interests, we have local government interests, we have, you know, organized labor. I think that we are able to leverage some of those relationships for different clients. And that has been very successful for our current clients. And for local government, we've had local government clients. When they come onboard with us, they stay with us. And one of the reasons is as your contract lobbyist, I know on an annual basis, I have to show ROI on your investment, right? I have to show the returns, I have to show the benefits. You're a city, you are accountable to your constituencies on how you spend those resources. We are able to deliver those benefits so that you can go back to your districts and say, look what I brought home for you.
Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think this is exciting. I support it. Michelle, I can't wait till you meet with us individually. The mayor brought up one of her issues. Yeah, that $4.2 million to Menlo Park to help them electrify existing buildings is a lovely opportunity for them. It hurts when you don't quite get the same opportunities. One thing I would mention, when I looked at your bio and your coworker's bio, you do some work for the city of Perris. And it is like Millbrae in that we both have anaerobic digestion. I work in the solid waste field. I knew Byron Share, interviewed him when he went from Palo Alto to Assembly. So it's great that you've got that background with Senator Share. Miss him dearly, AB 939, which was probably a little before your time, but.
I'm older than you think.
Oh, there you go. So, you know, for those of us in my field, Byron Share is our hero on that for so many things. But we have anaerobic digestion and there is legislation that will not, that will, well, the laws will be changing. And currently, right now, both in Perris and in Millbrae and I think in Oceanside, we get composting credit for anaerobic digestion of food waste and we will lose that in a couple of years, which will change the dynamics. So I love garbage. We can go into detail when you're ready. The other one, Public Resources Code Title 21, has to do with the noise impacts Millbrae is uniquely hit with, very technical. And the big one, although most of the money would probably come from Washington, is we're working towards tertiary recycled water for reuse, even to the point of potable. And to me, I think that was our city's number one environmental goal. It's a big ask, it's big money on that.
Great.
But that would be lovely and can't wait. Hopefully, the council will approve you tonight and can't wait to meet with you.
Thank you so much. And just so you know, one of our other clients is Waste Management.
The company Waste Management, Inc.?
Yes.
Have worked with them for years, serve on the State Commission with them.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Holliver?
Thank you. Thank you for your interest in wanting to work with us. Appreciate you being here this evening. It was impressive to hear about some of your work in obtaining funding for several of your clients. One question I had was in regards to, you know, legislation at the state level and getting the state legislature to, you know, listen to the interests of small cities. Unless you go through an organization like the League of Cities or someone like that that represents hundreds of cities. But I'm thinking, for example, about some, you know, recent legislation, SB 9, for example, or other housing legislation, where it seems that there was, you know, a great deal of organized opposition from local governments and very little attention paid to that by the state legislature. And how we can actually get legislators, you know, members of legislature to listen to the interests of cities, any city, let alone, you know, a city as small as Millbrae. So can you give a little bit of insight into your experience with that?
Yes, and I appreciate the question and I do want to level set expectations. I'm a very good lobbyist, not to like toot my horn, but I'm not a miracle worker, right? That was part of a package that the Senate Pro Tem was moving. She is a very powerful person in the Senate and in the legislature. So when you, when those kind of legislative measures come up, my job is to bring them to you early and say, here's this bill, here's what it's going to do, here are the impacts and here's the reality that we're going to be able to stop it. If we're not going to be able to stop it, what's the next best thing? What are some of the amendments that we can do and advocate for that will make the impact less, not go away, but less? And so what ends up happening is we have these conversations early and I'm able to have those conversations earlier. As a small city, and I just want to give this really small example. The city of Perris, like you said, is a very small city out in the inland empire. I don't think people even knew it existed. Every time I said I represented Perris, they thought I was talking about parish France. So one of their massive issues affected maybe like 5% of the cities in California. But because of the demographics of city of Perris, city of Perris and the city of Fresno were able to build a very small coalition. And when you have kind of those issues, coalition building is key to advocacy. And we were able to secure a veto on a bill that got zero votes. So the bill that Perris was fighting had flew through the legislature. I knew it was going to go because I saw the like political, you know, political will. And so I started working the governor very early on and it was an issue of equity. It just, you know, that I just happened to have that argument for myself and for the city of Perris. The governor Newsom vetoed the bill and I saved the city millions of dollars. So there's going to be issues that come and they get enacted and we wish that they didn't get enacted. But having an advocate at the table gives you the opportunity to know ahead of time to possibly request amendments. And if it's going to go, to prepare before, you know, you hear about it and it's already enacted.
Thank you for that.
You're muted, Madam Mayor.
I'm muted. I was telling you, you're muted.
I was waiting for you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Well, Michelle, you've obviously done your homework. So that's very refreshing to many of us. Thank you. And yeah, the COVID thing, it's about seven to 10 days, no matter what you do. Just got over it myself.
I'm on day two.
Sorry, there's just no way. But yes, no, this is extremely refreshing here. And particularly the fact we would love to have you and maybe somebody else from your office come to Millbrae. We are an extremely unique city, the largest intermodal center west of the Mississippi. We're tired of getting shitted all over by transportation agencies and others.
This is a business meeting, please.
Well, San Mateo County also is the economic engine for this region. And I think that's some of the messaging we need to get across in the legislature. The significant benefits with the biotech capital in the world. And we do need an advocate. We try to be extremely reasonable in everything we do. And it's just been kind of a battle. I do see you have some other clients that we haven't had the PG&E issue, but I see they're on your list.
We represent them legislatively. So what our firm also does is political compliance. So we represent like Google and Amazon. If they hire a lobbyist, we do all their paperwork, we do initiative work, but we are not the legislative advocates for PG&E.
Yeah, because we have been, I think, burned in the past by some conflicts that we would like to avoid and move forward here. So I'm impressed. I would like to though, see in person. So you can see us here and what happens in the city of Millbrae. The potential here is enormous and we have a really, we're getting a solid staff here and our population is diverse and we're proud of that. Moving forward here, we're trying to do the best we can for our residents and the region as a whole. So we look forward to pursuing this and meeting y'all after your 10 days or whatever.
Right.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Vice Mayor. And just so you know, as a law firm, we are bound by stricter, you know, conflicts of interest laws than your normal lobbying. So we do a very thorough, before any client is brought on, a discussion on is there any potential conflicts? And we would never take on a client where, and also vice versa, right? If you think that there is someone that we represent that could be, we would like to have that conversation about, does there really exist? And just so you guys know, while I was listening to your meeting today, this is just information that probably staff will provide you at some point. But Alameda City is also increasing their TOT, putting it out the November ballot. It's going from 10 to 15. Santa Monica is doing the same thing, they're going from 14 to 15. And the flavored tobacco referendum will more than likely fail. The main committee on the referendum hasn't had any financial donation in over a year. And so the state law likely goes into effect, which means that any ordinance that you pass, you know, the state law will fill in the gaps and you can obviously adopt a stricter ordinance if that's what you so choose.
I appreciate that and I'm a lawyer as well. We have been burned in the past.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Why I bring this up?
That, I appreciate that.
So Michelle, when you, when you talk about those kind of things, as a firm, hiring a lobbyist firm that's an attorney, do you do any sort of grassroots coalitions so that, well, like a coalition for the city of Millbrae where they could actually get together to help you fight the fight?
Absolutely. So one of the things that I would do when we sit down on for our winner ones is once I get an understanding of what are your priorities, then we'll start delving into like, who regionally can we collaborate with? Who locally can we collaborate with? What statewide associations would like to take this on? And so we help build those coalitions, we lead those coalitions in some instances. And so that is part of the holistic view that we take to advocacy on behalf of our clients.
So basically, the council sets the policy and if there's a need for lobbying for the policy that needs to be put into place or to win the policy over, you would put a sort of grassroots group together?
Absolutely. Yep.
And you would work with that group? And that group also could help financially, is that correct? Could there be some sort of pack with that?
In so much as.
That's further down the line?
Yeah.
But, but I mean, this could be a very, Millbrae, this could be the start of something very powerful for Millbrae.
I would say so and I do have to say, like I said, the city of Millbrae could advocate for itself. The problem is that you have so much on your plate already and you're doing so many wonderful things. Like I was looking at your guys' agendas, you know, kind of doing some research. You're doing some really innovative, great things in the city. The problem is that you need someone to go take that message to Sacramento and to say, look what we're doing. Look at how we're benefiting the state as a whole. Look how we can partner with you on some of these statewide priorities. So that's kind of the bridge that I built between the city of Sacramento.
Thank you.
That's exactly what we need before the mayor interrupted me.
Sorry.
No, we, yeah, we definitely need an advocate to share all the good work we're doing because that somehow gets lost in translation in Sacramento. And the fact that San Mateo County is 20 cities and not one. We, we are good candidate for good legislation. And I think it's, we are looking for a strong advocate and it appears that we meet those qualifications. So look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Is that a motion, Gina?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Do we have a second and then we'll hear a public comment?
Happy to second.
Thank you. Councilmember Snyder's second and we have, oh, Tom Williams, oh, Tom's not up. We have former Mayor Wayne Lee, please. Public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To my just quick question, what happens when another city conflicts with Millbrae's stance or policies? How do you lobby for both cities? Thank you.
Okay. Are we going to answer that question?
I can. So typically what, and I'm going to be very honest with you. We've never had a situation where two cities take opposite positions, but it could possibly happen in the future, I guess. What would happen is we would speak to both cities. If there could be no consensus, we would not work on the issue. We would bring on a subcontractor to work on the city of Millbrae's issue so that it could either advocate or, you know, oppose a particular legislative measure. Perfect. That would be our cost to us. Perfect. That would be our cost to us.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Can we please call for the vote, Elaine?
There, Councilmember Snyder?
Hi.
Councilmember Halliburton?
Hi.
Councilmember Fung?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pappen? Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
New business item thirteen passed by the vote of five to zero.
Super nice.
Real, real quick, I know the item's over, but I just wanted to, you know, uh, let the council know that Michelle did come to the city of Milbrae. She spent, uh. A good afternoon, uh, with both myself and Isabel and we toured around. She kind of got a lay of the land. Um, knows Milbrae. And so I just wanted to add that, that, you know, she did take her time to come down and do some research and tour the city and, and. You know, get an idea and knows, knows what, uh. What the issues are here in the city. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, you knew that and, uh, she's been very diligent and, uh, I think this is going to be a great partnership. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, I'm going to move to, uh, council comment. And, uh, three minutes apiece, please. I'm going to start with Councilmember Snyder and Councilmember Snyder, if you wanted to actually prior to your comments or. We're going to close in honor of somebody that was very close to you. And if you wanted to, uh, bring that up at this time, that would be appropriate.
You sure you wouldn't want to wait till the end?
No, I'm good for now. Go ahead.
Okay, um, quickly then in three minutes, uh, the city did apply for a CCG BPAC grant. It will come to BPAC in the summer and to Eugene in September. Uh, the state, the governor just signed a plastic bill SB fifty-four. Which will mean that the proposition that CCG in the city supported has been pulled from the general election. This has to do with recyclability of plastic packaging. I don't actually know when it'll go into enforcement, but like. The food laws, it's going to impact a lot of our businesses here. So it's something to put to add to Andrea Papa John's. General thing. Emergency Services Council, uh, working with the city manager. And the number of actual natural disasters we had in the last six months or so. Um, have been pushing Emergency Services Council to recognize that regional entities have been. Not easy to work within Milbrae. So we're starting a new process right now with the new. Office of Emergency Services, which is now under the county executive to find out. At least basically communication, for example, help us with SFO and the landing lane flooding problem. Help us with Caltrans, why they didn't close the exits to one oh one when Milbrae Avenue flooded in October. So, uh, trying to get emergency services to also recognize Milbrae and our regional entities. Milbrae Community Enhancement is rolling out Adopt a Spot if for, for the public on July thirty first. That's a. Is it a Sunday? It's July thirty first, whether it's Saturday or Sunday at two o'clock. Meeting at the Bayside Manor Monument sign will be the rollout of the Adopt a Spot pilot project. For the Bayside Manor and Hemlock neighborhoods, which includes Milbrae Manor one and two. Uh, for, so please, public, you're welcome. The city will have snacks. The city manager will be introducing it. Staff will be there. And the Community Enhancement Committee will be there to talk about what it might mean if you adopt a spot. This is the pilot project. And then the work will, the planning will go in August, the, the planting will be in September. And the rollout citywide will be in October. Uh, sea level rise, there is an issue where the, the executive director included parts of Milbrae. That I'm not sure is included in the grant. So Lisa Gautier from East Palo Alto is helping us straighten out that. And then finally, and I won't take away Anders from the South. Council Subcommittee on Committees and Commission Applications. We still have one opening for a middle school student for the Youth Advisory Committee. One opening for Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. And one opening and one alternate for the Culture Arts Committee. Who is working on the art show, All Media, it's the multimedia art show at the New Rec Center in October. And if you'd like me to read that we're closing in memory, give me a second to get to that. I'm sorry, I tested negative for COVID, but I'm still quarantining just in case. Um, I. Recently, uh, well, last week, Ron Winter from the Milbrae Camera Club passed away. Ron was a longtime member of the Milbrae Camera Club. Um, he was a close friend with my dad. I'm sure he was here when they used to. Develop photographs in the family darkroom. Um, he's, he's been around, uh, since the nineteen seventies. He had deep roots in Milbrae. He worked at the camera and photo section in the Hillcrest Pharmacy. And then Ron and a partner opened the La Cor Records in Milbrae where Pete's Coffee is now. And he had a CPA business in the Bayview Building for years. Uh, and also. Before he bought his building in San Mateo and Hillsborough. Ron was a longtime member of the Milbrae Rotary and a longtime member of the Milbrae Chamber of Commerce. His services were held. Yesterday, um, he's also a dear friend of Tom Doughty and I thank Tom Doughty for helping put together the records. Uh, Milbrae is unique around the Bay Area. We are one of the last remaining camera clubs in the entire Bay Area. And, um, I hope that they will be participating at the art show, but to Ron, your family, from my mom. Um, bless you and we will be closing tonight in honor of Ron Winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor.
Wow, I'm sorry. He had passed. My condolences to his family. Uh, just, I think, one thing at this point, um, well, actually two here. So MTC has a big meeting tomorrow. And CCG on, um, Thursday. So I'll try to get out something to the council as to update them on that. But, um, I'm going to be looking for, uh. Some sort of a downtown meeting with the Sheriff's Department and our local businesses. Uh, because we again are in a situation where they are hesitating to report crimes. For a reason and this needs to be resolved so that not only our businesses are protected, but the. Residents that are using our businesses and we need to up our game. For downtown, crime is not allowed here and will be fully prosecuted. So. Look forward to working with the Sheriff's Department and the VPAC. Uh, to bring that, um, to fruition. Because we cannot have that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just, uh. I was grateful that, uh, Councilmember Schneider was able to step in for me on the PC, uh, meeting last time. Um, because I have a conflict, uh, and the CCG, I should say, meeting will be coming up Thursday. Hopefully we can bring back some news. Uh, met with the staff and visited the San Mateo Chamber and the Technology Subcommittee. Hopefully we can soon bring, uh, plan back for future hybrid, uh, city council meetings as soon as possible. Um, we have one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Halliburton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it says, Councilmember Fung, uh, mentioned the Technology Subcommittee has been meeting, uh, spent several times. Over the past couple of months, uh, we're hoping to have something to the council, um, by now regarding the council chamber upgrades. As well as turning to hybrid meetings. I believe we will have something on the agenda for our second, um, July meeting. With some, uh, designs for the chambers. Hope, uh, we can, uh, come to some type of an agreement on that. Um, and also, uh, to resume hybrid in-person meetings, uh, starting with the first meeting in September. Um, let's see, we also, it's been a while since we've done. Council updates and, uh.
No worries.
What I, what I may have already covered or not, I don't think I've covered it in any of these other items, but. Um, let's see, the commute.org board met last month, reviewed, uh, the budget and, uh, work plan for the coming year. Um, there has been some, uh, increase in terms of, uh, transit ridership. It's still well beyond. Well, below the pre-pandemic level. I also attended the Library GPA Governing Board meeting last month and had my, uh, last meeting as chair of that board. Um, which was a nice experience the last two years serving as chair. Um, we actually did have an in-person meeting. I wanted to make sure we had at least one during my, uh. My tenure as the chair and, uh, we did that to tour the new, um, Brisbane Library that opened, um, over the past, uh. Opened, I think about six months ago. Um, beautiful building. I'd recommend it. And if you're ever. Brisbane's a little bit out of the way, but if you're ever in that area, uh, go check it out. Um, so very delightful, um, addition to the community. Um, with the Parks and Recreation Commission and Sister City Commission meetings were both canceled last month. Due to lack of forum, so. See those again, uh, this, this month. Um, that's all that I have. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, I do, uh, this week coming up, it's like my, my meetings always hit the. The week after the council meeting, but I want to mention what a great job Park and Rex and our city staff did. With Fourth of July, that, the, the Beats and Brews was quite a hit. The band was amazing. The people were better and, uh, good people, good time. It was, thank you, City of Milbrae. You did, you did awesome. And, and stuffing that and, uh, it was a great celebration, great white, way to, um. Uh, uh, I also want to mention one other thing. You know, my mom, it lives in San Bruno and she had to, she, her alarm went off. And I want to thank the Milbrae Central Fire, Milbrae Fire Department, se- from Central Fire. Uh, they came up. There, no harm done, no emergency, no nothing, dead battery. But they came like at one in the morning and she said, will you please tell them in your council meeting, I'm sorry, I woke them up. It was no emergency. And they were so amazing and so they were so kind. So thank you to our fire department. And whoever had to get up, I, she couldn't remember your names, but you all look alike to her. So she couldn't describe it. It was awesome. So I thank you that for your service and I hope, I'm sure that everybody in our city gets that same service. And I thank you for helping out San Bruno, our neighbors. That's, that's kind of like what we're all about, right? So with that being said, I have no other comments and, um, I'm just going to turn it really quickly back to Councilmember Schneider to. Uh, close in memory of her family friend Ron and I'll let you say that during the meeting, uh, Councilmember Schneider.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, uh. If we could please adjourn the meeting in the memory of longtime Milbrae Camera Club and business owner Ron Winters. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.